Lee Dakin is on Zoom, and I believe Heather Chase is also on Zoom, and Ben Whalen would probably be with us soon. He said he might be a little late. The first item on our agenda is to approve our minutes from our February 15th Select Board meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve our February 15th, 2023 meeting minutes.
I also have just one correction that I found when I was reviewing.
Give us a second on that, Lee, then you can give us the correction.
The idea is borrowing more expenses from people and businesses.
Someone's got a chigada. So Lee Gustafson's the motion, and Lee Dakin's the second. Go ahead, Lee.
So on page seven, line 14, just instead of the word "community" halfway through, it would be "committee," and that was the only correction I found.
Anybody else have any corrections, errors, omissions, anything else they'd like to point out on the minutes?
I have none.
Heather, you're okay with him?
No, yeah, no comment at this time.
All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended, please say aye.
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 Next item on our agenda is citizens' comments. If there was someone here that would like to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. Are there any citizens' comments? So I would request that you walk up to the microphone there and give us your name and your comment.
Hello, my name's Jerry Gleason. I live at 135 Flamstead Road here in Chester. Just like to bring up a few items, if I may. It's kind of a three-pronged question I have for the Board of Selectmen. In consideration of the recent events out in Ohio concerning the derailment and the leakage of chemicals, do we know, as far as the town, what travels through Chester as far as rail cargo and chemicals? That's my first question. I'll list all three, and then maybe you can address them. Do you get inspection reports from the Vermont Agency of Transportation as to their findings in town? And thirdly, what preparedness do we have as far as response in case of a spill in town?
Those are excellent questions. Considering we have a main rail route that's a freight line more than anything running right through the center of town, I think those questions are extremely important at this time, and they're something that we don't know the answer to. Well, I don't think we know the answer to, but it's something that we should pursue to find out the answers to those.
I have done a little bit of research since I've spoken to you, Julie, and in looking at some of the sections of the Vermont laws, the towns have, may go back to the railroad system and actually demand repairs, and there's a certain response period in which is required. So if we were aware of needed repairs, seemingly, we could get it. So I'll leave it up.
And now we actually have done when they did the repairs out here on 103 to the rail.
Sorry, I gotta turn off my hearing.
That's okay. When we did the work to the rail as it crosses here in the depot a number of years ago, the rail did that work, and that was from our request because I don't know if everybody remembers how bad the bumps were. They had raised quite a bit. The tracks had out of the ground. So that actually was done because we demanded that that be done. So your answers to the other questions. So I've talked to my emergency services chiefs and got some answers for you. So as far as the product that runs through the town, the rail is not required by law to inform towns of what material is running through their town, and often, they don't. So this happened a number of years ago, you may recall, when they want, when it was propane tanks and they wanted to store them.
Right in town.
Right in town. The rail did. And they, first of all, it started with they weren't going to tell us what was in the tanks. But Matt had heard that it was propane, so he had fought that pretty hard. We ended up, they ended up being moved out of town, but it was quite a battle. But because the rail is actually federal, they are not required to tell us what product goes through. For the most part, we are pretty sure we know. But the guys have said they have no doubt that there is hazardous material that runs through here on a daily basis. There's no doubt in their mind that that is the case. As far as if there were to be that issue, you know, if there were to be a derailment, our response would look like this. So our three services would respond. Our primary focus would be containment. So there are things that they do on a, which you probably are fully aware, on a chemical spill like that, it's containing so that it doesn't spread beyond. So they contain it. At that point, you have state on a spill like that in its railroad, state and federal would, hazmat response teams would come in, and they would, at that point, completely take over the scene. And Chester would simply play a role of support. The response from state down to here would typically be in the hour of, in the range of an hour. So they would be the next on command, and we would step down. And then federal, they said federal hazmat response can often be 24-hour period before you get a response from the feds.
And that's optimistic.
But at that point.
That's optimistic.
It's optimistic. How they treated, because I said, well, you know, I was surprised that they burned it, and this, so the guys gave me this whole lecture, more than I wanted, on why you burn versus any type of flushing, because if the flushing is going to, would flush that into the waterway, you also don't want it to filter into the ground. So often, the best response is burning, because it evaporates it immediately. You do have the air stuff that you have to deal with, and they try to burn at a time when there's something with the air molecules and you have the least amount, like, there is this whole science to it, they were explaining. But to answer you, if that should happen here, our response is containment. State and feds are notified. State comes first, followed by federal hazmat.
I just think there's a lot of lessons learned.
Absolutely.
I mean, I think it's a follow-up by all of them.
Excuse me, could you talk into the microphone, please?
Over to you, Jerry.
Sorry, Jerry.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Oh, sorry. My bad. I got a real mess here.
Roped in there now.
Don't rearrange everything.
I was just saying that I think there are a lot of lessons learned from the events that occurred out in Ohio, and it's well worth looking at the response and some of the follow-up on what perhaps we would do in a case like this.
Yep.
But, you know, so I understand that the feds probably come in and oversee everything and take control. But, you know, so it looks like we need to look at something preventative, perhaps, you know, maybe getting back to the reports that the state actually provides through their Vermont Transit Agency, because there is inspections, apparently, that they do, do. If we could get our hands on some of those inspection reports, and maybe we could push back on the railroad to get whatever repairs are needed. I guess that would be the best thing that we could do as far as the town.
We could try. I can, I can tell you from 18 years of experience, the rail does only what the rail wants to do.
Impossible to work with.
They are, this whole depot street sidewalk project has been held up for four years.
Because of the rail.
Because the rail will not give me the pedestrian easement to cross that track. Four years. They've delayed a federally funded project, one agency. So we can definitely try, and I'm, and I'm not trying to discourage that at all. We can definitely try. I just always caution people, when the rail is involved, don't get your hopes up that we're going to accomplish something.
I did know, when I went through the regulations, they wield a lot of power. There's no question about that. But likewise, there are sections in there that support the town in pushing back.
Yeah.
For necessary repairs, if we can identify them.
Yes. And that's what we did, like, like with this crossing here, right? And so if we could get our hands on the reports, absolutely. We could certainly look and see if there's areas that we know of that need to be, or they've identified, that need to be repaired, and we certainly could go through the process that we did.
And as Arnie said, you know, particularly since the rail runs right next to the river.
Absolutely, and our well.
And the river goes right down by the well.
Exactly.
I'm on a private well, but that would be catastrophic to the town.
Catastrophic, yeah.
Yeah.
Which goes back to that, with the point that you made about what's in those cars. We should know. It's ridiculous that they're holding back information like that, because how do you prepare for something? You don't even know what it is. If you at least know what's coming through town, you might have a special protocol to deal with it.
I think that's where we go back to our state legislators and get some insight as to what they can do to provide that information.
Well, Mr., I think he's looking at you, Heather.
I didn't point. I didn't point.
I took notes.
Well, it's, it's, it's an important topic. I mean, with the rails going through town the way they do, with the rivers where they are, and what's happened in this country regarding the accidents, and it seems like they're becoming more frequent, we're not asking for a lot.
If I'm looking.
Let us know what's coming through here and at least respond to our inquiries when we make them.
If I'm looking at potential disasters, that's one of them, you know. So, anyway.
Absolutely.
I've said my piece.
No, thank you.
No, I appreciate the comments and the.
And thank you for bringing that to our attention. I'll investigate.
Thank you, Heather. And we'll try to do what we can on our end.
Absolutely. I'll see if I can get reports.
To flush this out. And when we do get more information, usually during citizens' comments, we're really not going to have a discussion on the topic, but if it was a topic on the agenda with some more information, we can engage a lot more people involved with it, too. But it is, it's, it's a great topic to bring up.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other people for citizens' comments? If you're here for something that, if you, now's the time, if you would like to talk to something that is not on the agenda. All right, we've got three people there. No. I have a quick citizens' comment. I guess I could make one, right?
You're a citizen.
Everybody in town knows what happened yesterday with the fire in town on another old building in Chester. I think it was built in 1880, and how devastating that was. But I just wanted to give a shout out to all the people that were involved with it. The community came together, did what they were supposed to do. There were firefighters, there was mutual aid people, the other townspeople, the EMS personnel, the local businesses, McLomans, Smithy's was chipping in, Chester Hardware, and then just private citizens also, all working together to accomplish what they did, which was pretty spectacular considering the size of the fire and what was going on when they first approached it and stuff. Nobody was hurt. We did probably lose that building, but it just shows what a community could do when it works together like that, and how it did work together. And it was really something. I just wanted to thank all those people that were involved in it for what their work, that they do for this town.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And it was, I'll just add to that real quick. It was a, unfortunately, it was a, it was a test of a lot of things that we've been doing at the Public Safety Building with the crossover training.
Yeah.
So it was a prime example, because actually, the, the, putting out the fire before the rest of our, because we were at a department head meeting in my office when the town came out for smoke in a building that came out as possibly a chimney fire. So Matt left, Mike Ranzi went with him, and our Steve Verfe went with him. They went over to check it out. By the time they got there, it was first alarm fire, full engulfed structure fire. Two officers sitting in my office, one who was an EMT, and one who was a former firefighter, went over, and while we're trying to get the rest of our trucks there, we got one truck there, but my two police officers were rolling mine and fighting a fire.
Rolling out the hoses.
And it's all part of that cross-training. And then ambulance personnel came down that could get there quicker than some of the other fire, and certainly quicker than mutual aid. And so you had ambulance people helping fire, you know, getting tanks, getting all kinds of stuff ready, getting ladders, I mean, all kinds of stuff was going on by people that were not firefighters. But they were cross-trained enough to know how to help. So it was, unfortunately, it was a good test of our overlapping skills that we've been working on. But it was amazing, and, you know, I had Matt and other agencies that were mutual aid partners that were there, that said that was one of the smoothest fires we've ever dealt with. It just, everything went beautifully, as, as well as it could for the type of structure fire that that was. It went fast, and it was very hot fire. So, yeah, it was, you know, I think everybody was kind of proud to see all of their hard work and the overlapping work that we've been working to put into place. Worked really well, and.
I saw the police officers unrolling the pipes and hooking them up, and I'm looking, they don't look like firefighters, but they're cranking away.
Well, and I have, you know, I got a highway guy who was a firefighter in Springfield for years. Wayne Thomas is over there saying, all right, what do you want me to do? Give me some gear. Here I go. And it was awesome.
Citizens were stopping traffic. It was amazing.
Yeah, it was great.
It was amazing. And I thanked them all. What a tragedy.
It is a tragedy.
One other quick comment. Yesterday, we had our forum for the, the folks that are running for the Select Board, and it was well-attended. There was like 30 to 40 people here, and there were some good questions. The panel of four that were here out of the five, I think they all did a fantastic job.
Yeah, I agree.
Hugh Quinn, Arianna Knapp, Don Stromeyer, and Peter Hutkins. And I was surprised on how many people did show up that were interested in what's going on, and the quality and the caliber of the candidates really showed. And we're lucky to have that many people interested in helping out in our town and running for office like that. So that was really well-attended and well-appreciated.
And my recollection, too, is the fact that I don't think we've ever done anything like that before. We can do, we have had people talk to people who were outside the day of voting, talking to candidates and so forth and so on. But this, this was a real pleasure to have this type of forum happening right, right in the town hall.
Well, hopefully, we can keep it going as tradition, as years go on.
Yep.
Any other citizens' comments? Anything else? Next item on our agenda is old business, and Julie, can you take us through our old business list?
I can. Just a quick update that, for about five years now, we've been, Green Mountain Power has been working on the project on Lover's Lane. They are looking to replace a lot of electrical lines up there. They are, we granted an easement back in 2019 for them to bury power at the Pinnacle. So that project is actually going to be starting this spring. They've actually started some of it. So a group of town employees will be meeting with Green Mountain Power and Steve Mancuso tomorrow morning, just to refresh ourselves on the project, what all it entails. Part of it was kind of changing some electricity for the town. Currently, there's a three-phase, and I can't get too deep in the weeds here because I don't know what I'm talking about. But the guys told me today, there's a three-phase that runs to the pump house. Part of the deal, there's not three-phase that's being run by Green Mountain Power. So the deal was, made about five years ago, was that we would change out that three-phase to single phase to the pump house. So there's some stuff we're going to have to do with the pool pumps, but I'm assured it's okay. And Green Mountain Power is going to be helping to pay for, for some of these, these electrical upgrades that have to take place for the town. So we're all meeting tomorrow. You know, Wayne Wickens from Water Sewer is one of our master electricians, is our master electrician that we do a lot with. This project is, is bigger than what he would have time to do. So Steve Mancuso will be doing our portion of it, but Wayne's going up with me and, you know, Steve, our facilities guy, and Jeff. And so we're going to meet tomorrow morning, kind of get updated on the project refreshers for all of us, but that project will be starting very soon.
If I recall, right, a lot of all the power lines that are up in the air, in that whole area are going to be buried.
Are getting buried, yes.
Until they get to the end of the field, where the Pinnacle stops and the road continues, and then they're going to pop onto the ground.
Yeah.
So it's going to help with that whole area.
Yep. All that's going to be gone, yeah.
That was part of the deal, giving them the easement rights on the road as they headed up the, the rest of the, the road.
Correct. So that project will finally be happening. So the town, we applied for a communications grant. We are at a point where most of our communications equipment needs to be upgraded, about a $250,000 project total. So we did get through a reallocation grant through Homeland Security. We did get the police department portion funded, which is about $30,000. We'll be requesting, we've redone a few things. We're requesting the additional money. We think about $100,000. We've downsized the project a little bit. So about $100,000, that grant went out last week, so hopefully, we'll get funding on that. Memory and understanding for the garden. I'm almost done drafting that. I was waiting for their retreat to be, but I guess that got canceled.
Yeah.
Due to some issues.
Couple of, a couple of the folks ended up with COVID, so their retreat was postponed for a while.
So I'm just going to go ahead and proceed and send it to the, to, to the group that is in place now. I was holding off to see if there were any changes from that retreat, but I won't. I'm just going to proceed and send it.
So when you, when you do get to the point, when you're finished with it, just let us know what, what it entails, what it has on. I'm just.
Okay. Did you want, did you want to see it before I sent it? I thought I would kind of come to an agreement with them and then bring it back as a finished, finished product. Do you not want me to do that process? Do you want to see it before I send it?
Well, I'd like to, I don't know what it would include. I mean, it'd be nice to see it.
It's just a, okay.
Yeah. So as soon as, if you have a draft, just send it to us by email. That's okay.
Do you want it as an agenda item to approve before I send it to them?
I don't know until I see it, so. The consensus of the board, whether we just let it go, or we want to stay involved with it that close. I think, I think just sending us a copy of it, of the draft.
Sure.
And if somebody has some real issues with it, then we could speak up and go from there, but.
Yeah. I mean, that's what I was thinking, just if I get a chance to look at it.
Yeah. So Lee, one thing that, a couple of weeks ago, when we were discussing this, you did abstain from voting on it, because you wanted to think about it a little more. And I just, is there any other concerns that have come up, or that you, that you have thought about over the last couple of weeks that we should be thinking of or addressing?
Well, I, I think the, the thing that I was concerned about the most was not knowing what the impact would be to the town and taxpayer. I mean, that was the biggest thing that, and I've had a couple of constituents come to me and ask those same questions. So, and the answer is, I don't know. I think it's, I think it's something that members of the community want, so I'm not against it. I just want to make sure that I understand what the potential impact is to the taxpayer as we move along. I can't imagine it's going to be a lot. That's what I wanted to think about.
And I also, and I think the group also realizes this, too, that it's not going to be a lot. I think it's going to be a little, maybe help now and then from the rec department or, or the highway department, but I, I think, if anything, it's going to be minimal. And they realize that, because they, they're going to be doing this on their own as much as they can. So, you know, and if any expense does come up, it's always open for review again, to see if it, if we start realizing that it's going to, and I don't see that happening, but if it does, we have the option to address it in whatever way we see fit. That's, that's part of it. And I think that that's going to help in the long run, that we still have that control and that oversight on it. So I think it'll work out good for both parties in this case. I'm sorry.
That's okay. No. Summer music series, I gave you guys a copy of that schedule. Those dates have been set.
Yeah.
And solar field, I did hear back from Greenbacker. Their project manager, Ben, was out on paternity leave, so he is supposed to be back this week. They will be doing an internal review of the appraisal that we sent, and I should be hearing back.
It's going to be an interesting conversation when they come back.
It will be an interesting conversation.
So if you hear back from them in the same way we heard back from them before, it'll be a month.
It'll be a month.
I just wonder what happens if they come back with a crazy number that's exorbitant, doesn't make sense, and we have our number. I mean, what is the next step? I mean, there's still a lot of information that we need to obtain regarding return on investment, I guess was the biggest thing.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, everything else you could figure out, and you can get those numbers and know what's happening. But until you know what it costs and what's the return on that investment, that's the big one.
Right. And, and the biggest part of the return on investment is what we're paying. I mean, if we're paying 1.1 million or 2.4, you know.
Right.
There's a big difference on that. But hopefully, that'll work out, because I think it would be a huge asset for this town to have, especially if it comes in on the prices that we're looking at on our appraisal end of it, too.
Yeah.
In the long run.
That's all I had.
We should almost get somebody out there with a broom. I was talking about when I was going by.
The what?
A broom on that solar field. I was ready to go out there and start wiping them down, cleaning them off to get the sun. Because when I go by, I see all that snow piled up and they're pretty close to the ground, and I'm saying, man, it's a sunny day.
I'll tell you what, Arnie, you're on schedule for that on Friday, okay?
Right.
I'll do July. You can do March.
That's it for me for old business.
Somebody's got the sheep, I'll get the broom.
There you go.
Anything else on old business?
That's it for me.
Solar field. Oh, that was the last. Does any board member have anything on old business?
I have nothing.
Not at this time.
I have nothing.
Next item on our agenda is our Citizens Advisory Committee policy. I know we reviewed this at our last meeting, and there was a few little tweaks, and I think everybody got in their packet a final draft. And at this point, if everybody's okay with it, we can have a discussion on it. We could see if everybody's all right with it, or what's, what's in there. We did go through it at our last meeting, and like I said, there was just a few little changes on it, and I see that they were made and stuff, and if everybody's okay with it, we're at the point where we could be approving this.
You could be.
I would entertain a motion to approve our Town of Chester Citizens Advisory Committee. What would this be called?
It's a part. It's not, it's a part. Just say it a policy.
Policy, in quotes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Lee Dakin is the motion, and Lee Gustafson is the second on that motion. Further discussion on it. So the deadline for candidates is March 3rd, I believe.
Yep.
And we've gotten.
We've gotten several, yep.
Good.
Interesting.
What are we up to, you know, numbers?
I think nine.
Nine. Wow. Excellent. And we're looking at a five-person board, along with the police chief or representative of, of the, of the department and yourself.
Correct. Right. Rick and I will not be voting members of the board. We will just be in attendance.
You mean Tom.
I mean, Tom. I'm so sorry. Tom and I will not be voting members. We will just be in attendance. This is true citizens committee.
It takes a while to change.
It does. Well, it's been a while.
Rick was here for a long time.
You think I do, yeah.
Any further discussion on the policy? I think it's going to work out well. It's taken a while to get here, but good job on it.
Very nicely done. Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 We'll leave it like that. I'm supposed to take roll calls when it's, there's people on Zoom, but unless somebody has a nay in there, I'm, I'm just going to go with it that way. Anybody opposed? Who said that? It's all right.
She's rebelling.
I have to volunteer, Arnie, to stop in the town hall and sign whatever documents to get three signatures on it.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is approval for a cruiser purchase. Can you help us out with this, Julie?
Okay. So in 2022, we were scheduled, and the voters approved through the capital plan, the capital fund, the purchase of one of our cruisers. The cruiser to be replaced at that time was the K-9 unit. However, we knew Rick was retiring. Didn't make sense to replace the K-9 unit at that time, and we couldn't find a car. So finding the Tahuhs has been an issue. So finding the Tahos has been an issue. Many towns are having the same issue. There is a company out of Massachusetts, McGovern Municipal. And they went direct to a dealer, bought 100 Tahos. For municipalities for the purposes of cruisers. So they got a really good deal. They also a company that, that outfits cruisers. So normally we would buy our cruiser in, then we have to send it out to Adam Center, one of those to have it outfitted. McGovern does all of it. So we have talked to people that we would normally, in the past, have bought our cruisers from. And, you know, the comment was, you, you aren't going to get one for quite a while. So we looked in, well, maybe this is the year that we switch. We don't get Tahos, maybe we look at some of the other brands. But the Tahos seem to be the best. You tend to get the biggest bang for the buck. And they just are lasting a lot longer than the Fords or some of the others. So Tom has been dealing or talking with McGovern. They, their price for the cruiser is at 44,000, which is pretty remarkable. A lot of the dealers that we were talking to, a couple of them we know very well. So we had said this price and they were like, oh, my word, get them because you will never get them from us for that price. So the cruiser, and, and we know municipality, Springfield has bought two, Killington has bought two. So we know people that have bought them. We know there's not an issue. So we are buying 2022's cruiser and going to have it outfitted through McGovern since it's there and we don't have to deal with all that. The question is, 2023 was the year that we are off. You know, we have three cruisers. We put on a four-year rotation. So there's always a year off. That year off is 2023. But looking forward to 2024, because even though McGovern has the cruiser in place, to get it fully outfitted, we're out about six months. So, because getting the parts in to outfit the cruiser. So in looking ahead to 2024, I think what we would really like to do is go ahead and buy 2024's now. Out of 100 cruisers, he has 23 left. So we were thinking of buying 2024's cruiser, like I said, buying 2024's cruiser now. Again, we would finance through them because their interest rates are very comparable to the bank and it's just easier. And payments wouldn't start until 2024. So it would go through the voters and through the capital plan process like they always do. If we wait for 2020's 4's cruiser, we're going to have, we're going to have trouble. Number one, we may not find one. Number two, we certainly are not going to get it for the price that we are getting this one. And the cruiser that we are replacing, we, you know, we know we can't stretch them much further. That cruiser we're starting to have to put money into because we stretched it an additional year. So I'd kind of like to get the consensus of the board and if you guys are okay with that. Because again, this is not a budgeted expense, although by the time we have to pay the bill, it will be a budgeted expense. It seemed like there was something.
I'm good with that. Yeah, having read what you wrote and hearing now what you're saying, I'm, I'm good with it as well.
We've gotten to this point before when the cruisers are start, or any, any vehicle start costing us more money than they're worth holding on to because of the repairs and the use that goes. And then the trade-in drops and drops out too.
Well, and so that was the other piece I was going to say. So when we've taught, knowing that used vehicles are selling for higher now than they historically have in the past. McGovern has said, do not trade that in with me. And we've confirmed, we've talked to a few different dealers who have said, no, the town needs to sell those outright. We will put the seats back in. I mean, if we sell them to another police department, we can sell as is, fully outfitted. If we sell, you know, outside of a police department, we've, we've got to strip that stuff out and, and put seats and stuff back in. But they're saying we could get average of 20 to 25,000 per cruiser if we sell outright. So if you take those two, you're going to pay for one of your cruisers with the trade-in. So, you know, it seems to make sense.
Yeah, it just seems like the fiscally responsible thing to do for sure.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree with that as well.
I'll go ahead and get them coming.
Thank you, Julie.
Next item on our agenda are requests for ARPA funds for the dugouts. I know we've been dipping into this fund over the course of the last year, year and a half, I believe. Most of the time for capital projects to keep, one-time capital projects. So it doesn't affect our tax rate, but it does help with the bottom line. And this is another one of those situations. It seems like the dugouts are getting to the point where they're not safe anymore, I believe. So what's the report from Matt on that?
So Matt and Steve have looked at the dugouts. They're, they're old and they were built on cinder blocks. So there's quite a bit of damage and deterioration that has happened with those dugouts. One of them, they, my understanding from Matt, one of, one of them will definitely not be used this spring. We're not going to put kids in that dugout because it is starting to cave. The other three are pretty darned close. So we're to the point of where we're not really comfortable. So the work would be done, wrecker concrete would pour, concrete foundations in walls. And Springfield Fence would do the fencing. And then Steve and probably because he'll need somebody else, so Steve and John Wright would do any of the actual construction and organizing of the dugouts. So we could do all four dugouts for a cost of 22,000. It's one of the things that during the budget this year, we kind of pulled out and said, you know, that's potentially something that's ARPA funds. These dugouts have lasted years.
They've been there a long, a real, I don't remember the, when they were built.
So these ones would be constructed the same way. This is not something that we do work on every 10 years. You know, these are 30-year.
They're 30, 40-year-old buildings.
Exactly, exactly. And again, because we have a facilities director who is a contractor, most of that work we can do inside, in-house.
He's really helped out in a lot of the projects that we've had in town where we had to hire out a lot of the things that he's done. I think he's more than paid for his salary in savings alone. Never mind the projects that we've taken on that we normally would. Having that expertise and that sec, expertise and that second set of eyes, looking through the contractor's eyes, it's really helpful. As far as all our buildings, the grounds and everything else goes. So he's really worked out well. We got a contract, we got a master electrician.
I'm just waiting for my plumber. Next hire, I'm going to get somebody who's also a plumber.
It's, oh, nevermind.
The guys tell me you're building a kingdom. I said, I am, I'm building my own kingdom.
Just don't ask to change the name of the town, okay?
No, we won't, we won't. So 22,000, so I gave you kind of an updated little balance sheet, so to speak, of the ARPA the, the proposed expenses for 2023. Those are things that you've just talked about. But as I pointed out, the, you know, the final payment on the emergency services and highway building, that 105, you know, we're going to be audited soon. And I do think the, I think the surplus in the capital fund is actually larger than I think it is. But I just really want to wait for it to be audited before we.
Claim that it's going to save that.
So they may not, those, those expenses may not have to come out of ARPA. Those may be, just simply be able to come out of the capital plan. But anyways.
You mean the ES building on that 107?
That 105 and potentially the ambulance cot of 48.
48.
Those may be able to come out of the capital, not have to come out of ARPA.
So that would change that 338 to 438, almost back to 500,000.
Correct.
And it's depending on the surplus on the capital.
I just want the auditor's surplus number to verify myself. Yeah, I want to make sure that's accurate before we start telling people that.
That fund, would it start out around 900,000?
903. It's currently at 516.
Oh, there it is, okay, thank you. First thing on the top of the page, huh?
All good.
It happens.
So do we need to vote on that or?
I would like a vote since it's out of our funds.
Oh, that's right, yeah, it's not, yep. So I'd entertain a motion to take $22,000 out of our ARPA funds for the construction of the four dugouts at the pinnacle. Some move.
I'll get the motion. I'll second. Oh, who, did somebody else second?
I don't know, everybody's talking at the same time. So I think Lee made the motion, Lee Gustafson, and I think Ben Whalen seconded it.
Sure, I like it. Sounds good.
That's what I heard.
And further discussion on this. Would these will be, this will be built in this summer, spring?
They will start as soon as Charlie can pour the concrete.
The ground freezes out, thaws out.
As soon as Charlie, as soon as Charlie can pour the concrete, the guys will get it done.
That's great.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? I'm not sure what that was.
That was Heather, I think.
That was Heather, that she, I think she's agreeing.
Oh.
I said aye, but I was on mute, so it just takes.
Oh, you were late, that's all, okay, thank you, Heather. So the next item on our agenda are the loan documents for the lead line inventory. We've discussed this before as far as tackling this project to figure out where, if any, we have lead lines that are in town. I think the last time when Jeff was here talking about it, there was, he mentioned there could be a few different places. But this is basically an inventory, not just for the lead, for all the pipes and where they go. So they would have a map of the complete system.
Correct, and it's important to remember that while this is a loan, to remember that once the project is done and we've submitted the cost, this is actually 100% reimbursable, so this is $0 to the town.
Sounds good.
We just have to sign loan documents so that, you know, if we pay an engineer and don't finish the project, then we're on the hook. But once the project is completed and submitted, we are 100% reimbursed. So this is $0 to the town.
Just some paperwork.
Just paperwork.
So there's three motions we need. The first one is for a motion to agree to the loan agreement with the Vermont State Revolving Fund and its loan, RF3-494-1.0 for the amount of 73, 73,560. And this motion would be to authorize the chair to sign the document on this one.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Heather's the motion and Lee Gustafson's the second. Any further discussion on the loan agreement? All those in favor of approving the loan agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Second part of this is the general obligation note. Soon as I find it. So it's United States of America, state of Vermont, Town of Chester, a general obligation note to that same amount of $73,560.
So moved.
And this one we all sign, I believe.
So moved.
So Heather's the motion, Lee Dakin's the second. Any further discussion on the general obligation note?
I'll come in and sign it, Julie.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the last part is the resolution certificate. It almost seems like that should be the first part, that we, that we resolve to do something and then we do it. So we already did it, but now we're going to say it's okay. So it's a resolution and certificate, general obligation, the Vermont Drinking Water State Revolving Fund for that same amount, 73,600. So I'll make the motion?
I'll second.
Gustafson's the motion and Lee Dakin's the second. Any further discussion on it? All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And we need signatures on this one from the whole board also. And our next item on our agenda is our health officer appointment. Since Amanda has left. The, as the ambulance said, she's, she was also our health officer. And I want to thank her for her time that she spent here and the work that she did for our town. But now we have a vacancy and I guess Michael Ranzio?
Michael Ranzio is our ambulance coordinator at this point and has time. So one of the things that we did in the budget this year is we, we took out the health officer stipend and actually made it part of the ambulance coordinator's job. So he needs to be appointed as the primary health officer. And this is to authorize, a motion to authorize the chair to sign.
So I'll make the motion to authorize the chair to sign the health officer recommendation form?
I'll second it.
Lee Dakin's the motion and Heather is the second.
It's Lee Gustafson's the motion.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Heather's the second. One of these days I'll get the names right. And that's, that's more cross-training. I mean, he was rolling out fire hoses yesterday. He's head of the Helps with the Ambulance Department and now he's our health officer.
That's right.
Right.
Excellent. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. And the liquor licenses have done different now.
Liquor licenses are new now. The state has switched to a completely digital system. So what happens now is you get the report that you guys got. This is sent, this is emailed to Debbie, to the town clerk. The select board makes motions to approve them. And then when I give this to Debbie tomorrow, she will go in, she has to go back into each license, click a button that says it's been approved by the select board and they're good to go. So the entertainment permit is still an in-house permit that needs to be signed. But the liquor licenses themselves all just need motions.
We never, we didn't have motions.
No, because you signed them. Now you're not signing them, you're going to make a motion to approve.
And each one individually or can we group a couple together when it's one company?
You could group them together when it's one business.
So I would entertain.
Should I do a motion, Arnie, to approve all liquor licenses today?
We have to do them one at a time per vendor. It's like, so we.
Really?
We could do Saundrie with second class and tobacco and then McLomons to theirs and then Jiffy Mart. So we, so we're going to need an individual motion for each.
Each one.
Each establishment. So you, yeah, you could make a motion. The answer is yes, but we just have to do it separately.
So the first one would be Saundrie, second class and tobacco.
So moved.
Second.
Heather's the motion and Lee Gustafson's the second. Any further discussion on this? There's been no issues, there's been no problems with the police department, the chief.
No, no, not with any of these, no.
Not with anything, okay. All those in favor of approving the second class and tobacco for Saundries, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So this one, McLomons, we have to do two separate ones. So we have to do McLomons for first class and third class license. And then we'll do the entertainment license by itself. But I would entertain a motion to approve the first class and third class liquor license for McLomons.
So moved.
Lee Gustafson's the motion and Lee Dakin's the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And, well, I'll leave McLomons when we got one at the end to sign. entertain a motion to approve a second class and tobacco license for the Jiffy Mart in town.
So moved.
Second.
Lee Dakin, Lee Gustafson's the motion, Lee Dakin's the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of Jiffy Mart's second class and tobacco license, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And the last one is the only in-house one that we apply. And it's an entertainment license for McLomons. And it says from 11:30 AM, basically till 11:59 PM. Could be anytime, any day of the week, kind of open on it, but.
It's the same as has, there's no changes.
It's pretty low-key over there when they do have entertainment. We're not expecting any battle with the bands on Friday night or anything, but.
So did we get two copies of this on purpose or is that? In the electronic file, there's two, one at the front, one at the back.
No, that's probably just my bad.
So I'll make a motion to approve the application for entertainment license for McLomons?
I'll second it.
Lee Gustafson's the motion, Lee Dakin's. Lee Gustafson's the motion, Lee Dakin's the second. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anybody disapprove? They've been good neighbors with the folks that live there. Everything's been quiet over there.
Yep.
They've been there a long time.
Yeah.
Also, uh, next item is new business or future agenda items. Uh, before we go there, and I, I should've said something under citizens' comments. Uh, Ben Whalen and Lee Dakin, both of you guys, this is your last meeting, I believe. And I just wanted to thank you for, for myself and for the town, for all the work you've done and the time and commitment you put into this town and the job that you've done. Uh, it's what, what makes our town work is having citizen volunteers doing what they do. And I know both of yous do a lot for this town in many, many different ways and it's so appreciated. Uh, Lee, you've been here on the select board back in the seventies or eighties, were you? Eighties somewhere?
Early eighties, yeah. I was the first female member of the selectman, select board.
Did they all have great beers when you were on back then too?
Well, I didn't have one. Now I'm beginning to wonder.
Well, I just, I just.
This has been an honor for me and I thank everyone who's supported me.
And, and Ben, same with you. Juggling the career, all the work you do with the fire department, with Yosemite and then this, uh, select board stuff, it's been appreciated and it, it's really important and I, I, I thank you and the town thanks you.
And I thank you guys too. It's been a pleasure working with you both.
Same here.
I, I appreciate that and I thank you and, uh, maybe in 10 years when life slows down a little bit, we'll, yeah.
Sounds good, Ben. Thank you, thank you both. Uh, future agenda items.
Your next meeting will have your, um, your certainly, town meeting will have taken place. Um, so you will have your reorganization and your annual appointments, but the majority of that meeting will be interviews for, um, the advisory committee.
Advisory report.
Yep. So I'll be reaching out to those people probably early next week to kind of put the schedule in place, um, once I have, once I've heard from everybody and the timeline is running on Friday.
So Julie, do you have something that you will give to those who are newly elected to the board so they can prepare for those interviews?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Just so they're not coming in blind.
No, they'll get the policy that you just adopted. They'll get our conflict of interest policy because these applicants are, are, are gonna be held to that, like all boards are.
Yep.
Um, that, that's probably what they'll get.
So can you give that to me as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You'll all get it, not to worry.
Okay.
No one will be left out.
One thing that, uh, I was thinking about that came up, and I forget who even mentioned it, I'd like to give credit to it, but it was maybe approaching the high school regarding a student rep for the select board, to have someone join our meetings that would be interested in, in government, not, not in a voting capacity, but in an observation capacity and a, they, they have a civic requirement at the high school and I, I know exactly how it works, but they're asked to participate in civic things in the town.
Yep.
And I'm wondering if that would be something that the board would consider or at least have a discussion on it, bring it up to see how it would work and maybe bring it up to the high school and see what their take would be on it. I think it might be interesting to get a perspective of, of students.
I, I agree with you and we all, we have for several years had a student on the school board.
Yep.
At the high school, a non-voting member, um, as again, a civic obligation. And I think if, there may be someone who'd be very interested in joining our group as, as a high schooler and learning more about what we do as, as the governing body in Chester.
Can we add that to your next agenda?
Uh, maybe not the next one, but the one after.
What after? Sure.
Just to get it there, just to maybe put it as a placeholder.
Could be the next gov, or could be a future governor or something.
And you gotta start at our select board meeting?
Right.
That is exactly right.
You never know.
Never know.
One other thing that's come up, and it, it came up yesterday because of, uh, the citizens, the forum we had for the candidates and stuff.
Oh, I thought that was great.
Certainly, yeah, it was, it really was.
Yeah.
Sitting on two boards, do we have a policy on that or?
So with the.
What, how does that work?
You did a policy, it's part of the conflict of interest policy that you did, uh, several years ago. Um, there can be one member that serves on multiple boards. So, um, the planning commission.
One board, one select board member that could serve on multiple?
Correct. But you can, we had a period where we had like two people on the DRB that were also on the planning commission and, uh, one was on the select board and one was on the planning commission. I think we had one was on all three at one point in time. Um, so you changed it and I forget the exact wording, but basically one person can be on the planning commission selected.
And, and I was curious whether we should revisit that. And, and the reason that was the case back then is because we couldn't get people to, to volunteer for boards. But if we have the people that are interested, it doesn't make sense for me to think that a person should be on like the select board and the planning commission. And, and this is nothing against Peter or anything to do with Peter. Peter's a fantastic member of the planning.
Well, and you're.
Yeah. And there, and you know, it has, it's not, that's the reason I was bringing it up. I just think the more people that we include in local government and have involved with it, uh, the better.
So would that be just boards or commissions as well?
That be a part of the conversation?
Because Ariana's on the local cannabis control commission.
Yep.
Not to leave you out, sorry.
Um.
But that, that would be part of the conversation.
Well, if the person in town who's in charge of the policies could start the review of that, we could certainly, um, have that be discussed.
Or as far as the, there's those commissions that we have, that we have board members on such as the cannabis control.
Yeah. Well, just throwing it out there to see, uh.
Well, let's review it.
Yeah, we'll revisit it.
We'll take a look, take a look at the policy and take, and have the discussion.
Okay.
And figure it out from there.
Okay.
Not the next year.
Good, because I've been there many years and I haven't seemed to be able to get you even one, so you could give me.
We, we've had that discussion of policies every year.
I know we have.
It's, it's a lot, it's a full-time job if you really want to get through it.
It is a full-time job and that's the problem.
Because of the stack of policies that's there.
Start working on them and something else comes up. But I have Preston now who knows how to write policy. So, um, that's a huge help, you know, that's a huge help. I haven't had people that, that are comfortable with policy writing and review. So I have Preston now, so now I have no excuse. We're gonna do them this year, so.
Okay, you're on record.
I know. Hi.
Anybody else have anything that they would like to see on, um, future agenda, future agendas?
I do have a new business item for you.
Yeah, what is?
Just, um, I don't know if any of you received it, VLCT is rolling out a new, um, municipal access portal. Um, so you, after town meeting, the town clerk will be updating VLCT with, all town clerks in the state, will be updating VLCT with, um, contact information for board members. You will then be sent an email, uh, and I will update this again because we'll have new board members. But, um, you'll be sent an email and you're gonna be given login credentials. What's been happening is municipalities pay a annual fee to be members of VLCT, but VLCT's website is not locked in any way, so anybody, even non-paying members have access and a lot of that access is legal opinions. Um, and so they're, you know, getting a little nervous about liability and I don't blame them. So they've, they are creating this new member access portal and the great thing about it is, um, now if the select board wants to do a training, first of all, you will all individually get emails letting you know of the training opportunities that are available, but you can sign up direct, the bill automatically comes to the town. Um, you can ask questions directly to the league on your own in a much easier way, um, as board members and, and get access to stuff, um, maybe stuff you don't want to go through your town manager, you know, so now you've got direct access. Um, so anyway, you're gonna be getting, those of you who are still on the board, um, for your information, you're gonna be getting some, 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 uh, email information and whoever the new two, two new board members are, I'll update them and let them know they'll be getting stuff.
So is that gonna change their general public, uh, information that the general public can get?